Good morning, everyone. It is my pleasure to welcome you to the Town Hall Meeting on the Proposed Improved Service Delivery Models. My name is Tara Lawson and as a representative of the Professional and Scientific Council, I will be serving as the moderator for today's event. This Town Hall Meeting is a direct result of the tremendous amount of feedback and questions that have been received on the proposed models for improved service delivery by both the Professional and Scientific Council and through the WorkSite website. This morning, as promised, you will hear directly from Pam Kane, the interim Senior Vice President for Finance and University Services, and Kristi Dar, the interim Vice President for University Human Resources. Kristi and Pam will each have an opportunity to make brief presentations about their visions for the proposed models and why they believe this change is necessary for the university. We will also dive into the most commonly asked questions that have been received thus far, and we want to make sure to leave sufficient time for questions from the audience in the room. For those of you who are joining us via the livestream or viewing the recording after the live session, please make sure you submit your questions and feedback through the end of the day today via email to the Professional and Scientific Council or to the WorkSite website through October 26th. Remember that while the WorkSite website auto-populates the email address field, you can choose to delete it and provide questions and feedback anonymously. I'd like to start this morning with Kristi and the number one question that we've been hearing, which is, "Will my position be affected by these models? And if so, who will be making the decisions about my job?" And before you respond, Kristi, I do want to remind everyone that we do understand that answers do not yet exist for every single question or for every single person, but we would be very interested in hearing more about the process for getting us to these answers. So the question is, "Will my position be affected by these models? And if so, who will be making the decisions about my job?"
Okay. Be happy to answer that in the best way that we can at this point. There's a lot to unpack there, okay? Right now, we're working our way through what is the right model. And the models technically need to be decided on by the president before we can dive into the specifics about the jobs. We have outlines of what likely is in those jobs. We'll be able to talk more about that, both Cedar Vice President Kane and I, about those today as we work to frame up and gain more detail about that. I can say, if in today's world, you touch HR and Finance, and we're going to define that as we work through our presentation today, your job will have some change to it, okay? In essence, by the university's choice of going to Workday in and of itself, how we do business is changing. We need to reflect in this model how that transition to Workday, how we can best align those tasks, and what we need to do to be successful to support employees during this process. So at a 30,000-foot level, if you do HR and Finance, something will likely change about your job, okay? We're going to work through getting to that more specifics after the model has been decided and we're able to define those jobs. Pam and I both have things that we're working through about, is it inside the model or does it stay local? For example, in HR, right now, I'm thinking, not decided, I'm thinking that likely those timekeeping activities that happen today, or a framework of what happens today, will stay local and be done in the unit department, that local level, okay? I don't see that going into the model that we'll talk about here in a little bit. So that's one of those things that we have to decide what stays local and what comes into the model. And we can walk through the rationale of what some of those things are that are on our plate. But I also want to be really thoughtful. You all are listening here, whether you're PNS or merit supervisors and supervising staff that are going through these transitions, or you yourself may be impacted by this transition. So I'm not telling you enough yet about how that impacts you. I recognize that. But defining the model is the first step, and then working through a process to define the jobs, provide more information to all of you so you can make a decision. Some of you say, "I'm passionate about both." Boy, we have a lot to unpack there to help you decide, do you want to stay local? Do you want to go into the model? And we know we need to develop that in specifics. How that impacts you specifically has to be unpacked as well. Let's say I come forward and I say, "I want to go into the model." We have to do an evaluation of where you are now. Likely, your supervisors also have to play a role in saying, "Okay, Kristi decided to go into the model. She didn't do all HR work. What's left?" So that the unit can be appropriately supported with those other duties that don't go in the model. There's a lot of layers here to unpack. We're working through a process to do that. The model comes first, the jobs come second, and then creating the structure and process to get to the "how." We're working up a framework for that right now. When we talk about who's making the decision, again, no decision has been made on this, but from an HR standpoint, I think there's a lot of things to consider. One of those is the employee's desire, okay? Do you want to be inside the model and do this different kind of work? Whether you're inside the model or outside the model, there's still a variety of unknowns. And so, the employee and their choice, likely their current supervisor may also have ideas and want to know how to support that person, whether they're going inside the model or staying local. As we talk about a process to unpack and get to that detailed approach, I think it's really important, both in the HR model and in the finance model, that we have some leadership roles that we need to fill. As an employee, it's really important for, I've heard it through the comments and many of you stopping me on campus, I want to know who my supervisor's going to be if I choose to go in that model. So we need to populate that model from the top and then throughout so that folks have a chance to know who their supervisor is, and I'd like to see those new supervisors play a role in selecting the individuals that would populate the model.
Thank you, Kristi. A large percentage of the feedback we've received has been focused on the proposed finance model and not understanding how this model would work. I would like to invite Pam Kane to take the next 10 minutes to share her vision for this model and why she believes change is necessary.
Well, thank you, Tara. You're going to have to help me keep within the 10 minutes. Most of you who know me, I tend to talk on, so. Slides. Forward. Okay. Finance delivery model. First thing I want to tell you is, we didn't just start this discussion. Actually, four years ago, there was a team of us, and that represented all three divisions. So it was Martino Harmon, it was Ellen Rasmussen and myself. We went out and did a series of listening sessions. We talked to over 400 employees, and we separated the supervisor employees from the line people that do most of the day-to-day work on the finance, and we said, "What are your pain points? What things are you having difficulty with on the finance?" And so, what we did then, we accumulated all that information, and guess what? We're still using that today. Some of that information, our systems haven't changed. You know, a lot of our jobs haven't changed significantly in the last four years, but that's going to change. We're going to change a lot come up this next year. But consistently, from those employees, we heard that they had received conflicting information. They may talk to one person, they get the directions to take it one way. They talk to somebody else, they go a different path. So some of the things, other things, lack of consistency in answers. It's like, "Yeah, sure, that's fine," you know? And some of them, if they knew what answer they wanted, they said they would shop for answers. I'm thinking, "Really? Okay." So, you know, and I got to tell you, I'm a recovering auditor, all right? So everything has to be just so, you know? And so, one of the things they said, well, some of the things they knew was that a transaction that they were about to do was wrong. But their supervisor, who had probably less training in the finance than they did, they said, "Oh, that's okay, you know, we'll get it through." And so, the person ended up saying, "Well, what I did, I stepped back and I had to call Central and say, 'Can you stop this for me because I know it's wrong, but I have to do it.'" And much to my dismay, I asked two groups of, and it was over 200 people, and I said, "How many in this room have actually had to do this?" Okay? And like I said, as a former recovering auditor, almost every hand went up, and I went, "No, no." You know, I couldn't believe it. It was like, "Really? Wow, so something is not right. Something inherent in our systems was not right." And so, what we're trying to do is look at those and all those issues that came up, and believe me, we have pages and pages and pages of comments on what happened. So what we're trying to do in this new model is to enhance that service of culture, enhance what we're trying to do with the finance side, because the finance side really should be the back of the house, okay? These are the things that, you know, if everything goes smoothly, okay, everybody gets paid on time, guess what? Things are good. You don't get a paycheck, things are really bad, okay? So, we have a really, really great opportunity with Workday. And to shape things differently and to provide a lot of that support, a lot of that expertise, and special services that make everybody's job better. So, my vision, okay? This is my vision. So I'm going to take you from, right now, we're still on A, okay? In this whole discussion of service delivery. And I'm going to take you to Z, all the way at the end, but we haven't identified what B, C, D, E are. We just don't know what all of those are right now. But my vision on Z is that we will have highly-trained, knowledgeable finance teams embedded within the units. I'm going to emphasize teams because each of them might be constructed a little differently. We're going to try and right-size it for the units that are involved, and we'll have the things that are kind of like things, but not necessarily all the strategic things. Strategic will stay within the units, but we realize those teams have to help the units function like they should function and hopefully in a very, very modern way with the Workday and understanding the Workday. And we can't train, I mean, right now, over 1,200 people touch the finance system. We don't have the time or the effort to train 1,200 people to use the Workday finance function. But I understand this is going to be extremely difficult. I can't imagine what you're going through because none of you have really seen the vision, and I really am sorry about that. But we've listened to your comments, and we've read, I've read most of the ones, I don't know the recent ones, but there's pages and pages of comments, which I really appreciate you sending in. But I understand the vision has not been spoken, so that's why I'm trying to tell you what my vision is. So, but in these teams, and they were the red teams on those slides, and we'll get to those slides in a minute, but the red teams, I envision them to be very proactive problem solvers. As an example, we've had grants that get written and have maybe a specialized piece of equipment that needs to be purchased for those grants. But guess what? It always gets stuck in the procurement phase. But if we have proactive problem solvers, we can get that when the grant is actually looked at. We'll have the trained people in those teams that'll say, "Oh, this looks like it's going to be a sole-source purchase." How many know how to do sole-source purchase? I can't even say it. But there's all these steps that you have to go through. Okay, I have one hand. Any other, oh, two hands, three, okay. Not very many know how to do a sole-source purchase. But what we're hoping these teams, well, they'll be highly-trained, they'll be experts in those areas, and they'll know how to step you through and hold your hand while you're going through that process. And they'll be able to do those kind of things for you. And the next one, intentional focus on a culture of customer service. They're going to be there saying, "Okay, what do you need?" You know, and so, some of these might be you, you know? If you want to go this route, it's like, we're hoping, highly-trained not only in their specialties, but in customer service. What should you be looking at to help the needs of your units that you're serving? So what we want to do is try and set up people for success. So we want everybody that decides to go, you know, into these teams and those that do not, we want to set both, all of you up for success. And so, what we're trying to do within the teams are develop a set of job families within, that will allow those people in those teams to have career growth and potential. Let's see. And then, for accountability and understanding of the unit needs, the people in those units will understand what the processes are, will understand the regulations and the policies and procedures. They will understand what things need to be done and what sequence they need to be done in. And guess what? Their supervisors will also understand all those things. So that there will be a process, but the thing is, you put a requisition in for a chair, okay? I've done this, this was a while ago, but I have a bad back. I need a chair that sits straight up, I need a lumbar support, and I need something, because I'm tall, I need something that goes far enough off the ground that my feet, you know, they told me I'm supposed to have my feet flat and my knees straight. How do I buy a chair that does all of those things? These folks will be able to know what contracts you need to go to and be able to find those chairs for you. They will have the expertise to find and know how to service and provide that customer service. And then, last but not least, is a robust feedback loop. So, in the end game, we're hoping that these teams will function, highly-functioning individuals, that we can continually improve our service, our punctuality, our timeliness on everything that we do. So that's my vision for a team. And they won't all be the same. We don't have the same standard needs throughout campus. We've got a lot of units that are big or small, and we haven't defined units yet, but they all have different needs. You know, there's, for the Finance and University Services Division, we don't have the need for grants, but there's a lot of units that do. So, in my team, I may not have any grants specialist, grants fiscal manager specialist, but in other departments or other units, they may need those specialty needs. So, the original model, that's what the original model was, and unfortunately, it has caused a lot of concerns, and I apologize for that. And so, what I tried to do was a little simplified version that was, so the red teams are going to be right-sized for the units that they serve, if they need a lot of grants fiscal specialists. But they may have several, but other units will have none. Some, if you do a lot of international travel, you may have specialists in those fields that know exactly what you need to do in international travel, what you need to do with your phone, what you need to do for insurance, travel insurance, what you need to do for your computer, and what has to be done for certain countries. That'll all be expertise within these red teams. So, but based on your feedback, I'm hoping this simplifies it a little bit more. The dotted lines are, the red teams are servicing the yellow teams. How's that? And so, the dotted lines are going both ways, they're going all sorts of ways, but the red teams will all report to a finance service manager that pretty much anybody can contact. The red teams, anyone can contact. And so, it doesn't have to go through a channel or a specific chain. So if I'm a person that I've gone on three trips in the last two weeks, I'm going to take my receipts and say, "Help me, please, you know? Can you help me and seeing what I need?" You know, if I don't have that documentation, the red teams are going to be able to do it, send it back to the individual and say, "Here you go." But if we have, say, Unit D has a big influx of things that they're needing right now. And we've right-sized the teams so that teams may have a certain number of folks, but the teams are, in my vision, will be cross-trained so that if Unit D has this big, huge event that they're putting on and they need specialists from those other teams, guess what? That financial services manager will be able to move people and help those teams out. They'll be cross-trained so that they can help whenever they're needed. So if there's vacations, people are going on vacation, or they're going on maternity leave, or whatever kind of, you know, that they need, we'll be able to help all those teams, and we'll be able to cross over and have somebody that's trained and not just somebody that's a body. They'll be there and they'll be highly-trained and be able to handle whatever comes up. And I need my water. I got two minutes? Oh, I won't take my water. Okay, I'm sorry. All right. But the teams will be based on the complexity of the units, the size and complexity. So, what else do I have? Oh, thank you. So, this is my final slide, so I'm hopefully going to get it done in my minute and a half? So, walking through the slide, we'll still have a central financial unit. They're the ones setting all the policies, the accounting policies, procurement policies, travel policies. They'll investigate all the very, very complex accounting issues. They'll be responsible for the institutional-level finance and business processes, okay? That will stay at Central. For the unit in the finance, they will still have their unit's strategic budgets and their planning and their major analysis for what that unit is doing and where it wants to go. So those things will stay within the units. They will also have their folks to oversee the unit's financial health, on where they're going, what their budget looks like, what their staffing looks like in relation to their budget. So the strategic things for the units will all stay in those units. But you can see on the specialist teams, these are the things that we're trying to pull out that we can add value in those red teams, and they will perform the various business functions, and they'll be highly-trained on Workday and how to process, but that's not it. I mean, that's not the only thing they'll be doing. They'll be doing all the related support functions that involve travel, equipment, or any kind of procurement, grant expenses. They'll also be doing, they'll be understanding and trained in the regulatory compliance. They'll be trained on the uniform guidance, which is across all federal programs. They'll be preparing accounting journal entries and adjustments for budgets. They will prepare a lot of various financial reports that those units need. Maybe they'll come up with new kind of reporting for those units because of the special needs they have. They'll be able to address the finance and compliance-related issues and questions, and then guess what? They're the ones that if you have anything that that group, even though it's highly-trained and it's got to go to Central, they're the ones that are going to be working with Central to figure out how to get that done. And my time is up.
Thank you very much, Pam. Thank you very much, Pam. I would now like to turn it over to Kristi so that she can share her vision for the HR model and why she believes this change is necessary. She also gets 10 minutes.
It's the test for the day. We could talk about this all day if you haven't figured that out by now. This isn't something that we cooked up just overnight. I think the path to here for me has been throughout my 10 years at Iowa State and experiencing the gaps in our model on a daily basis and hearing from all of you, performing these business processes or trying to support employees without the right tools and resources to be effective. And so, that's the passion behind outlining this vision here today. So, you've heard Dr. Nussar and Dr. Schmidtman talk about improving the employee experience, supporting the unit's mission, and creating a culture of service. And those are three key elements in the HR model as we move forward. Want to talk a little bit more about that from the HR perspective. Improving the employee experience. Certainly, the HR model difference from the finance model, and there's a key component why, people. It's important that we make payroll. Trust me, it's important we make payroll. I think you all might agree. But we need to become more than just making payroll, more than just how fast we can process something. Our employees are the heart of our organization, and we've been operating in a model that has happened over time, not with direct guidance or thought in how we operate. And my hope is that Iowa State puts its employees first and creates a model that makes the transactions, the business processes, home, right? That's what will happen. We create folks that are trained, are able to do that, and so we can focus on being proactive and helping to develop programs that are missing, like retention programs or attraction to the institution. We need to modernize our efforts to support today's landscape and the competitive nature that we sit in as an institution. So, the HR model is around the employee lifecycle because what is someone's leave might also be related to their ADA accommodation, or their LTD application may also be related to why their performance review might be late because they've been on leave. We want to make sure we're treating this as the whole employee experience versus this transaction or this process. We want that to come together. Workday will help us to do that, but it's more than Workday. It's putting people first, and it's thinking about it in a different way. Through this model, we hope to provide career paths and development for HR professionals. It's really hard right now. From a central perspective, I have the conversation with HR staff that are in UHR that want to go out and do HR work in the, let's say, the distributed model versus in Central in our current state. That's a big leap. The same way when folks are maybe serving as HR liaisons today, want to come to Central, that's also a big leap. This model creates both opportunities within a UHR specialist structure as well as a decentralized specialist structure. I look forward to the opportunities that has for folks' career path and growth. Supporting the unit's mission. You know, I appreciate President Wintershtein's perspective. I've advised her as a dean in my role in HR. I've advised her as a dean, and now I have the opportunity to advise her as president. And it's been interesting to see her evolution in that advice and what she sees from her vantage point today. You know, certainly, I think she and I've had the discussion, "Kristi, I could just give this money to you and you could just create the centralized process." And I said, "I don't think that will support the institution and the framework that it needs." Okay? Having HR support in a local manner is critical to being able to be proactive, to be able to understand the business unit. I can't understand it entirely from my office, okay? We need folks that are connected to that unit's mission directly in support and are trained appropriately to be able to do that. We want to modernize our processes and policies. I hear from employees, "I went from Unit X to Unit Y. I felt like I changed companies. I felt like I changed organizations." Sometimes, that can be even still in the same college, okay? Because in this unit, there's a process for the process for the process for the process. I love getting the form, right? We have maybe four, there's a form, we have four slots for signatures, and there are more people signing that form, okay? It comes in with six or seven, okay? We really need to streamline that and think about how we can support globally here across the institution, our efforts to have practical policies in a modernized way. Many of our policies today are based off of what our systems allow us to do, okay? Blessed ADIN, it's gotten us this far. From an HR perspective, it's a payroll system. It's not an HRIS, it's not an HR system. It doesn't give me the right information for people, and it doesn't give those folks trying to serve the HR function today the right information for people. Up until about six months ago, I couldn't have told you with any fair certainty who a supervisor was on this campus. You might have had that information locally. I didn't have it. People admin and that upgrade, we got a little bit more information, but still, we heard, "Oh, people aren't keeping that up to date," right? So you still had to kind of read between the lines. It's really important that we allow that flexibility at the mission as well across the institution and modernize those policies. The culture of service is also really important. Transitioning, you know, I hear HR folks are also, you know, compliance-related, if you will, right? At our heart, is it legal, is it not? That's one of the foundations. Is it good for our employees, et cetera? But we need to create a different mindset as it relates to service. To Pam's point about compliance earlier, we get the same call. "This transaction's in your inbox. I'm going to need you to deny it. I know it's not right, but my boss told me I needed to." Okay? We need to empower folks to have the right conversations and educate the folks that they're serving at the local level to help support how we do that. Also, you know, I certainly hear those scenarios as it relates to service. HR, you know, whether it's UHR or folks out in the field saying, "No." Oftentimes, we need to frame up the conversation in a different way. It's, "Tell me what your goal is." Okay? That may be retaining Sally. Okay, what's important to Sally? Hopefully, the supervisor can tell us, right? And what's important to the supervisor? As an HR professional, I likely need to go check Sally's record. I likely may also need to see other folks similarly situated to Sally before I can provide great advice. And being able to do that and say, "Okay, come back, let's meet, let's talk, you know, later this afternoon, I'll have some recommendations for you," rather than, "No." Okay? Workday will provide us with that opportunity. We need to create that culture of service where folks feel empowered to help folks solve problems at the local level. Many of you do that today in varying degrees with the tools and resources you have, okay? I'm not saying that's broken all across campus. I think they're to that point about, as employees transfer from this department to that department, having a level of consistency in that, I think, is really important to try to achieve. How am I doing, Tara? Holy smokes. Okay, this did not show up as well in this really bright screen as it does on my draft slide, so. So why should we move? In our current state, of course, we've talked about the inconsistent training and support. And again, that's not to the fault of those folks decentralized. In many ways, I can't even tell you who is responsible for what. I can tell you if you have access to a system. You may be the third backup that did something in that system three years ago. I can't really tell from my vantage point. And so wanted to create that professional development and training, eliminate those cumbersome processes to have simple and efficient business processes. The multiple levels of review and approval. Anybody ever seen an EPA? Okay. We need simplified approvals. I'll tell you in my next model or my next slide, those approvals happen most likely at the HR coordinator or HR partner. They're not coming up to UHR. Okay? Those trained professionals will manage that transaction or business process approval at the lowest level possible in the organization with the right information. There will be times that transactions are coming to UHR, yes. Okay? You want to up somebody's salary 80%? We're probably going to talk. Okay? There are still protocols and still rules in the system that help to drive that, but it doesn't mean that 100% go all the way through all of those levels. We want to deepen the expertise, take away this transactional. If we can get the transactions humming, we focus on the employee experience. Again, developing programs for retention, attraction, helping folks broaden their professional development and experience throughout, not just in HR and finance, but we're delivering that to other professionals throughout Iowa State. And we want a strong engagement in the mission. So this was the proposed model that Dr. Nussor and Dr. Schmidtman shared with you. I appreciate the feedback on it. In my earlier comments, when we talk about populating the model, that lead HR partner in the blue box is the first position that I would see filling to support the model and be able to support walking through that, the senior partner, HR partner being the next. This should not be new. I haven't made any changes to that. I have been getting some great feedback about how you think what might should be in the model versus outside the model, and I think that's still something we're continuing to unpack and work through. So this was a little bit more specific than what was shared, I think, in the previous open forums. Some of you may have seen versions of this. But again, university HR and the provost office for faculty, right? Faculty appointments, those types of things are not, HR's not going to govern those. That's not going to change. Brenda Beeling's here from the provost office. She's shaking her head. She's, we're all together that faculty is still administered through the provost office. That's really important message to get across. HR focused to HR strategy, policies, and practices. Okay? We're also that communication vehicle and developing those training opportunities. The senior HR partner, obviously, that partnership with UHR and the division heads, helping to make sure and right-size the model, much like Pam was talking about, that financial services manager. If we get off kilter, it doesn't mean we let you drown. Right? We're not going to be able to think of every single nuance as we work through this. There's a lot of variables here. And so we're going to have to balance and tweak. And we can do that through this model. And the HR partner will serve a primary role in helping from that customer service perspective in making sure those things are right-sized. But of course, they're providing guidance and overseeing the divisional team. The HR partner is engaging with those unit leaders, working on strategy. Right now, oftentimes, we spend our time on transactions and never get to the strategy. Workday will provide us with more data and the opportunity to do that and provide better guidance to units and their leaders, provide strategic consultation. HR coordinators, more frontline advice. That's likely where those first calls are going. I'm almost done, I promise. And so, I'm trying to talk fast. But I want to make sure that folks see that that HR coordinator role is a very important relationship. Okay? That's not a, "Well, the transaction comes in and I press a button." That's not what that is. That person is helping to say, when the manager calls, let's say as an example, they're saying, what I hear you saying is more like a post-doc than a research associate. "Can we talk through the differences and let's make sure we're doing the right thing here?" Rather than pushing it through and then coming back and go, we do this a lot, right? We want to have those meaningful conversations upfront. And that HR coordinator is that person that's helping that local unit on a day-in, day-out basis to help make some of those decisions. Okay?
Thank you, Kristi. We're actually going to ask you to stay up here, and I'm going to ask Pam to join us up here because we want to take some time now to dig into the most commonly asked questions. And you guys have all seen these. They were in the email. These are the ones that have been received, obviously, thus far. Pam mentioned we're continuously receiving feedback, both through Professional and Scientific Council and through the worksite website. So I'd like Pam, if you would be willing to start, with addressing how units will be defined, who decides that, and if there are any exceptions.
I will try my best. First, we'll have to get the model approved, whichever way it goes. And then it'll take a lot of work from all of us in the room to figure out what those units are. And given that there's complexity in all units, and all that complexity is different for each unit. So we're going to have to figure out what things can handle the size of teams. We don't even know the size of teams yet because we're still working with data, we're still working with what those job descriptions look like and what the teams need to be. So we could, in the units, if they don't need, like I said earlier, if they don't need a grants fiscal person, then we may have a person that helps with, you know, that's trained in procurement and travel, but not necessarily. They'll have some training in grants, just in case, but their focus and their expertise will be in the procurement side and maybe the travel side. But as far as defining each of these units, we're not there yet. We're working on trying to figure out what the model is and then trying to fit the model where the needs are. So we want to definitely look at complexity. We want to look at the numbers of things that those units do. So if we have some units that, you know, that never travel, okay? They probably don't need a travel person to help them. But if you have units that travel extensively to international destinations and all over the globe, they're going to need somebody that's more experienced and has a greater depth of knowledge on what the international risks are, what things that they can help those folks do, and what things they can help them be proactive in looking at. So it all depends on the units and how they get set, but that's where we're going to work with each of the units on campus, and you can define them in any way you want. It's going to have to be a very, very collaborative effort. We're going to have to work with everyone within those units and the supervisors, the unit directors or deans or whatever title you want to give them. But the units have not been decided.
So to follow up on that, how will the number of functional specialists needed to support a unit be determined? And then there's a follow-up to that, which is, will industry benchmarks be used?
And I can't tell you on the industry benchmarks because we really haven't found industry benchmarks yet that kind of support these specialist roles for us in higher education. But again, it's those, the teams will be decided on the complexity and the number of things that they need to happen. So you could have, if you have a very large unit, you could have maybe 25 people on the red team. Okay? But guess what? They may be me, there may be 25 people that serve that unit, but guess what? They may not all be sitting in the same location. You may have a red team, you know, you may have three over here, you may have five here, you may have three over here and two over here. But the intent is that they will work as a team. They will have team meetings weekly and to understand where the needs are for that unit. And so it can be, but I don't see a huge pool of people in one location. And I think because we're trying to get those teams embedded in the unit so that they get a clear understanding of what the needs are for those units, they understand and can be proactive in the problem solving that happens and that need to happen in those units, and they could be there as an expert and specialized resource person for those units to go to.
Thank you. The next question is for Kristi. Yep, go ahead.
On the who decides, back to the model, I think that's a collaborative process. Okay? I want to be really thoughtful that, to Pam's point, we don't know what all that looks like. But I really think that's a collaborative process based off what we feel like is necessary to populate the model, as well as what the senior leaders feel like is necessary and feasible for their units, as well as what the president thinks. I think she'll be weighing in on that as well, and so how that unit structure gets framed up. The exception question, I want to make sure I address that. We all know all of our areas are special, right? We hear that in HR all the time, but we're special. I want to embrace that, okay? While we're trying to figure out who the units are and how they match and what that is, we have to have that kind of dialogue to find out what is unique about a unit, okay, in order to make sure their needs are being met. And we know that that looks different for residents versus vet med or just however local you want to define that, okay? We all have areas that have unique needs, and we have to have those discussions. We've had some feedback in the surveys responses already saying, "Hey, we would like an exception." Okay? We don't know the model yet. We need to know the models and the jobs and be able to have some of that discussion before we can say there's an exception. I think it's a real balance. So we got to go step one first. But what I want to make sure we're saying is it's collaborative. And I agree with Pam's answer. This is an evolution of trying to get to what is needed and the right size.
Thank you. Are merit staff going to be affected and how?
Yeah, certainly. I see many merit staff here today. The model, again, if you're doing HR or finance today, you will be impacted by this. How? That is still yet to be determined based off of how the jobs are defined and what that looks like. We know that merit policies or merit practices differ. They follow the region's merit system rules, and that differs from our PNS policies and procedures. And so that'll have to be taken into account as we work through this.
Thank you. Pam, can you better define the job responsibilities for the functional specialists? For example, what transactions will financial experts perform? I know you started to talk about that through the slide, and if you want to pull the slide back up, you're more than welcome to because we want to know what level these financial specialists will be and if one person could do all the financial specialist duties. All of that is rolled into this question.
Okay, let me try. Within the finance teams, I envision, okay, it's still up here, I envision a group of folks that are highly trained on the accounting side because in Workday, you'll need to know debits and credits. And so if there are payroll adjustments that need to go from general fund units, the funding from general fund, and it has to go to grants, guess what? Those are all accounting transactions and need adjusting journal entries within Workday. So we're going to have to have folks that are trained on the accounting side of things. We are on, so I envision like maybe an entry-level position, a junior level and a senior level, that maybe one of them is a working supervisor for the teams. As an example, the 25-person team, they may have, you know, several levels of folks in the accounting side just for that. And then I think there's some on campus that on a monthly basis, they allocate each person's salary 50 different ways. That's five zero. And I'm like, wow, okay? That's going to take a lot of accounting knowledge and accounting background to figure out how to do that within the Workday structure and adjusting all of those. Same thing with budget adjustments. There's going to be a process in the system for budget adjustments and what will allow budget adjustment and what won't. And those will be driven by the units themselves on their strategic, if they're going to say, "Okay, I'm going to, I want this unit over here to get $25,000." Okay? But how do I accomplish that? Well, in Workday, it's a budgetary move. If that's, and you can do a permanent budget move, you can do a temporary budget move, but it's still in the system. It's an accounting system. It's a full accrual basis. So not only are we throwing all these changes with your jobs, if we're going from a cash basis to an accrual basis system in accounting, that's going to be a leap too. So we're going to have to have folks that are trained in the accounting side of things.
And just to clarify, you're talking about within the, what we would call the red box at the bottom, red teams?
Yes.
Okay, so within the red teams, there's levels of employees
Correct.
within that red team.
Right. And I'm seeing, like I said, in my mind, scary place, but in my mind, we're going to have, within the team, folks of accounting, with accounting skills and folks with, I'm going to say, compliance, procedural, policy, federal grant-type things because there's a lot of hoops on procurement, there's a lot of hoops on travel, there's a lot of hoops on grants fiscal management. And guess what? Those folks are going to have all the answers, or most of the answers, I would say, because they're going to be highly trained. And they will also have different levels of folks, you know, we'll have entry-level folks, we'll have junior and senior level, and maybe supervisory, depending on the size of the teams. But then it could be five of those teams may report to one financial services manager. And so that financial services manager would be able to balance the number of people in the teams and be able to support teams when they are, support those teams when they have a lot of stuff going on, or use those folks in another area to support folks, to support activities that are going on in another area.
So did you address if one person could do all of the finance functional specialist duties?
If one person could, I highly doubt that. But like I said, I envisioned two types of team members or two sets, two job families, am I got that right? Job families of team members within the red team. And not necessarily one person to do each different one, but they can do combination of things.
Thank you. Kristi, I know you addressed this a little bit in your slides as well, and we can go back to those if you would like. But it's the same question for you. Can you better define the job responsibilities for those functional specialists in the model?
Sure. Thanks, Pam. I appreciate it. So certainly, here, we would most likely be talking about the HR coordinator or the HR partner. The bulk of the business processes and that coordination with the local unit is likely happening for that HR coordinator. And they're doing life cycle transactions, okay? Think about a job change, think about a hire, think about a separation. Those types of things are taking care of the employees across the life cycle. And that's engaging in problem solving and helping folks to understand what best tools they have available to them to solve those employee issues or just help employees move through the process appropriately. So the HR coordinator is likely, and to Pam's point, that may be one, that may be multiple coordinators to support a unit. That's still something we're working through. But they're doing a life cycle approach and staying connected to those staff. The HR partner probably is less in Workday from an everyday business process perspective, but they likely are also spending a lot of time consulting with that HR coordinator, making sure they've considered all the options, having those strategic discussions, helping to support, helping to support them through that. There may be transactions or business processes that go to the HR partner to approve. They certainly need to be aware and informed on Workday and Workday's capabilities. Certainly, they're probably doing a lot more work with reports and getting data out of the system, making sure, again, data of integrity, all of those types of things are happening.
So the next question is for you again.
Okay.
Because it deals with compensation. So would you please address how compensation will be impacted by the models?
And that's obviously a personal question, right? How your compensation might be impacted in the model is truly about you, okay? I can't answer that for the entire room. So I want to talk through some, you know, general principles that we're discussing. So likely, likely that's a budget neutral or neutral if it's considered a lateral move. If there's a promotion, that's certainly something we need to discuss about what that looks like. But I also think there's a balance here of, we know there's inequities and challenges on campus now and compensation. I can speak to the HR structure. I know that that, we have a wide variety of compensation practices. I know that that, we have a wide variety of compensation practices. And so through this, and, you know, I don't know that I've said it here, but 7-1-19 is a milestone, not a destination. Everything's not going to be perfect by then. Everything's not going to be settled, okay? Our campus is evolving, this process is evolving, the Workday will be a product that facilitates constant involvement for Iowa State. And so through that, we know that after 7-1, and after the implementation of the PNS classification and compensation study that's set to roll out in September of 2019, we'll likely need to go back and take another look. But that, in other, there'll be other areas as well. So the hard part today is if you're PNS staff member and you think about the future, none of us know where we will sit in the new ranges. Will we sit high, meaning we will have penetrated through that range and maybe have a decreased earning capacity, or maybe we have new earning capacity? That's not an answer that will necessarily be solved through this model. We all sit here today with that before us.
Thank you, Kristi. Pam, can you address who decides which employees get to move into these new roles?
It's a joint and it's collaborative effort. So it'll be employees, supervisors, and administrators, all at the table. So if an employee doesn't want to move, we will definitely take that into consideration because that's, the employee is the first person. So I can't say a lot, but it'll be a collaborative effort. It'll be a lot of activity between now and then, lots, because there's a lot of you here and there are a lot of you out there that this will impact. And even the ones that come into the red teams or the ones that stay with the units, every single person that touches finance or touches HR will be impacted in some way. So we're all in this together, and we have to work together to get that done.
Thank you. Kristi, back to you. The next three commonly asked questions all surround that functional specialist role again. And so I'd like to read each one, and then we can go through them one at a time, but I want to give everybody the concept of the three that we're doing. So the questions are, I like the variety in my current role, so why would I move to a functional specialist role? For employees not interested in functional specialist positions, what opportunities will there be? And what happens if no one expresses interest in the functional specialist positions?
Oh, I get all these. Great. I see how this is. So give me back the first one.
So the first one is, I like the variety in my current role, so why should I move to a functional specialist role?
You know, that's a personal question. I think each employee has to assess that for themselves. You need to learn more about the jobs as we're able to define them. You need to learn more about what's going to take place inside the model. I think you also have some fair questions at the right time to ask at the local level. So what would this look like if I stayed? Okay, I'm going to pick on Ruth here. Ruth's always in the right spot at the right time. So what if Ruth goes into the model, for example, and Brooke, her coworker, says, so if Ruth goes in, now what does that look like if I stay? Right? Because Ruth may have tasks that also then need to stay and move. And does that fit in Brooke's job? Does that go to Stephanie's job? We don't know yet. That's something that will have to evolve. But you personally, I think, have to evaluate whether, as you learn more about these roles, what interests you. I do not believe that they are routine tasks on the HR side. We employ humans. Humans give us surprises, okay? So as much as there are things that are a part of our core jobs and what we need to do, we need to make sure you all get a paycheck, but there's still variety in how we solve that, how we plan for the future, how we be proactive in that. And I see every one of those folks in the HR model, all the way in through University of Human Resources, playing a point of that. And I don't know, Pam, if you want to talk on your side on the specialist duties?
I think you covered it pretty well, unless you have any further point you want me to clarify?
So for employees not interested in the functional specialist positions, what opportunities will they be for those employees? We have a lot of employees that have a little bit of finance.
Right. Yes. And so if you have 10% finance, you have 20% finance, you have 40 or 60, and you don't want to go to the red teams, guess what? You'll still have the other tasks, as Kristi was saying. The people that do move into those red teams will have very similar, they may have 10%, they may have 25%, they may have whatever, but guess what? The rest of their duties have to go somewhere. You know, and I've talked to some unit leaders that are kind of excited about it because they're able, they've got to think differently. They've got to think, you know, creating specialists within the units. That may not be the finance specialist, but they may be other specialists for, you know, student interaction, or helping department-type, department chairs with their duties too. And so creating different kinds of work within those units. So there's a lot of things that can happen to those that don't want to come to the red teams. Their jobs will also change, you know? I got to stress that. Their jobs will also change if other units, if people leave and those duties have to be assumed by someone else, so.
Thank you. And no one wanted to address what happens if no one expresses interest in one of these positions? You got that one? Okay.
Hers is different than mine. I'm going to cry.
I would too. I would too. You know, I think, that's a fair question. It's fair, and I think there are certain, certain things we have to think through. You know, I think, from an HR perspective, I think about, what happens if everybody comes? What happens if, you know, how long will it take us to populate? If some come, but then we have to compete and bring new folks in? And then there's what happens if no one comes? Okay? I can say, at least from the HR side, that I believe that we will be able to populate the model. I've heard great enthusiasm from many of you saying, finally, we might be able to get this right. And so I appreciate that enthusiasm and your willingness to step forward and say, I'm willing to do something different. It's a leap, a leap of courage to do something different, and to put yourself out there, sometimes with your peers, to say, I'm for this, and I want to move forward. If no one comes, we got it wrong. We got it wrong. We didn't, we didn't, we didn't listen, we didn't design it right, and we'll have to go back and retool. Okay? The president's committed to doing it differently. How differently? We've got to figure that out. We need to give her our best advice. We're human here. We got to figure this out. And so I think that's my fair answer.
Thank you. Pam, do you have anything you want to add?
Other than I'll cry?
Okay.
I'll be with you.
Can I put my sales pitch on now? I think it'll be some great opportunities on the red teams, okay? I think, well, we have a lot of things that we can do that might be forward-thinking and move us into the future faster, and I think Workday's going to help with that. Because the thing with Workday, it's going to change every six months, and so there's some things that we'll have to get used to on the Workday side of it for the finance. And all of finance, so when you think of the different systems that we currently have, we have our quality financial statements, we have our procurement system, we have our travel system, guess what? Those are all going to be one system now. And so that's kind, you know, right now, some of you may be, I don't even know all the terms, a realigator in one system, an approver in one system, and something else. But in Workday, that's, the language is all going to change, the roles are going to change, it'll all be one system. And so that's, you know, that's part of the reason, but that's not the only reason we're changing. But I think there can be some dynamic and fun things happening in the red teams, you know? And my goal is to have a really focused red team on customer service. Your first answer is yes, we'll figure out how to do that. And that, you know, so that kind of gives those red team members empowerment to, oh, we can think differently. We don't, you know, we know the rules, okay, the rules say we have to X, Y, Z, but if we go along this rule, but the rules allow us to do X, they allow us to do Y, guess what? We can maybe do some fun things that are still within the rules, but they can help move our units forward.
Thank you, Pam. Would you also please address how the new models will be financially supported?
We're working on that. Our institutional budget management team, and hopefully you've heard of them, but they're a small but mighty group of folks from across, across the academic division of Student Affairs and Finance and University Services. They're a group of five individuals that, over the last budget year, they were formed. Ellen Rasmussen is coordinating that group, but they have a lot of things that they're looking at, the budget model, they're looking at all sorts of things, and that's kind of how we got our salary increases this year, because they modified and tweaked the budget model, even though it wasn't very much. I know, I understand that, but we did have some significant cuts from the state. And the team was able to come together and figure out different scenarios, they came up with different ideas, and guess what? They analyzed a lot of different ideas. Guess what? This is on their plate too. They get to figure out how all of this is going to be funded, and the budget model will be changed a little bit to kind of fund those positions, so, and fund the red teams and figure out how to do all that. So the IBM team, they're up to the challenge, and they're already working on it. But I can't give you a final answer, because that is my final answer for today.
And that was the final question from the questions that were submitted. So we would like to thank you both for addressing the most commonly asked questions that have been received thus far. And at this point, we would like to open the floor for questions from the audience. So for those of you in the room, we need you to raise your hand, and Meg and her eye will get you a catch box that you just have to hold, and then you can talk right into it at your normal volume, and we'll be able to hear you.
Catch box.
We got our first one. There we go.
I get the cube. So since there is a deadline for Go Live on Workday, there's got to be a deadline on this model. So can you give us an idea of deadlines on when the units will be defined, and when those of us who do have jobs that are impacted will be able to see what jobs we might be able to look at in those specialist positions?
I can take this one. Okay. Nobody get out, I mean, this is pencil only, okay? This is, this is just my thoughts, not the thoughts of the president. And we're assuming that when we give her a recommendation, it meets her needs and she's able to make a decision, okay? We're hopeful that that decision comes in November. Once we have the model, essentially, her decision set, Pam and I get to work. We're doing that now and developing these jobs, but making the final tweaks. We hope, in the late November, early December timeframe, to be able to come out and talk very specifically about jobs, okay? We'll meet with all of you. Whatever your needs are, we want to get your questions answered. Again, knowing that this is an iterative process, there will still be some questions, even at that time, we're going to have to work through, and you'll have to, our best answer at that time, maybe a little more defined than it is today, but our best answer at that time. After the president makes her decision, I'm hopeful, assuming she says yes to something, we know she'll say yes to something, she says we need to do it differently, right? But that includes that Pam and I would post those highest-level positions in our unit so that those individuals can be brought on, we can start filling those supervisory roles, okay? So that's the first thing. The rest of the roles will certainly be out of the gate before those are posted, okay? We're not going to surprise you. But those, I think Pam's model, it's an associate vice president, my box said lead HR person, or HR partner, sorry. And so we want to see that done. The bulk of the work likely comes after the holidays, okay? I think it's a January, February, where we're really trying to slot, because you can't make your decision until we have those units defined. Units aren't going to be defined likely when the president makes her decision. I'm looking at Dr. Nussar, unless she wants to correct me. Likely, we don't, we're not that far along, okay? So the unit decision is independent of that. So the bulk of the work, figuring out who goes where, how to support folks, likely comes in the January, February. In my mind, my words, that folks are slotted and know where they're going before the end of March. That lines up with Workday training, okay? We need to get that unpacked so folks can go and be trained in Workday and start to assume those roles. It's messy. I want to tell you, there's no way to do this and it not be a bit messy between January and Go Live, 7-1-19, okay? Obviously, as people move, we'll be unpacking what stays. Unpacking what stays is likely an iterative process that HR partners will be involved in, helping units to figure out how to do that so that folks maintain their classification. It's really important that we try not to demote anyone through this, unless they voluntarily choose to do that. That's going to take some creativity as we look at the work that remains. And so that unpacking of what stays local is going to take more time. And so I want to make sure we're really thoughtful that that's going to ebb and flow probably over the next year, as we get that to settle, in a realistic, in a realistic manner. What else have I left out?
One of the things we've talked about too is maybe doing a job fair, or a speed dating type thing, where you go and say, okay, I got five minutes with you, tell me what this job is, you know, and I can ask my questions, or go to this other one. I mean, so everything is on the table right now to figure out, how can we best get you comfortable with what those new jobs are? So that means, to me, January and February are going to be very active months of trying to make sure that you get the information that you need to help you with the decisions that you're going to be making, so.
We know that many of you haven't seen Workday. For you to make that decision, you likely want to know more about that, and we got to get to that, get to that point to be able to do that.
Box up in the back.
New box?
Ready?
I have several questions. My main concern is, my main concern is that this may lead to over-centralization. You are not defined a unit. I just consider one unit, College of Engineering. Are you going to put 6,000 students, 280 faculty, and I don't know how many PNS and merit employees in one unit? If you do that, that unit is not going to work. You have to decentralize within broad units, the way it is today. The way it is today is that the departments handle most of the student stuff, what account they are on, what account they're going to be on, what account they're going to be shifted to, and that happens hundreds of times a semester. A student is a TA, he doesn't want to be a TA, a new grant comes in, he moves from a TA to RA. If you kick this up to the unit all the time, not going to work, because the person in the department talks to the two professors saying, okay, when do you want this student transferred? And, you know, what is the budget implication for the department? Because the department was paying for the TA salary, now the RA is going to, the contract is going to be paid for the salary, that has an impact on the department's budget. If you kick it up to College of Engineering, this will take forever. Right now, the person in the department handles it, handles it in five minutes. You need to be sure that you are decentralized. I go through this as a center director, I go through this at least once a week. When new faculty comes in, want to do something, we have to have research associate. If I have to kick it up to the unit and go to master in every half an hour, you've destroyed my productivity. Now, I'm the one who brings in money. You destroy the productivity of the faculty, the university will go down. You have got to make sure that the productivity remains high, and that as much decentralization as is possible is implemented. Just look at any organization out there which is efficient. Look at Google. Google is decentralized. Google's units are 20 and 30 people. Look at DARPA, Defense Advanced Research Project, that is very decentralized. ARPE, very decentralized. So you need to understand the importance of decentralization and kicking down the real decision-making as low as possible. I agree about procurement and a few other things, but the people we have within the departments and centers are doing a very good job of managing their budgets and managing all of these complexities, and only rarely do we have to kick it up.
Thank you for your comments. Who has a box next? You have a box?
I have a box. I do-
I do understand the teams at the unit level. What I think that we need to talk about also is the teams at the departmental level, where when you have people coming in every day, you have a customer service that you do want to give to them. When you put one of the people that may have financial, HR, one of those people, and put them in a red box, all of that administration will need to stay at a local level. I understand that. For instance, myself, if I go into one of the red boxes, there's a lot of administration left over. Will these administrative roles be shared within a unit as well as the HR and the financial? If that's the case, how do we do, have a team within our department that covers each other when we go on vacation, or someone's at the front desk, cover the phone, that kind of local level?
And that's why it takes, going to take everyone. I mean, it's going to take all of the people involved, all the supervisors involved, and all of the units, and their, I would say, their leaders to say, "What do we, what do we need, what do we," you know, and provide that support. There are certain ones, certain leaders of those units, units not defined, but thinking they might be, they're trying to think differently on how they, how they look at the folks that are in their departments, and what part is finance, what part is HR. They're currently looking at those right now. "Okay, how can we do this differently? If this new model gets approved in this manner, wow, what does that mean for us and what's left, and how can we redo that?" Some of them are concerned that if we take finance out of some of those positions, then that might impact where that position is on the pay scale. But, so they're thinking differently and broader, "Well, what can we, if we take that part of finance out," and remember, it's not the budgeting as such, it's not the strategic parts of the finance, "but if we take that out, what can we provide to them to make their job satisfactory and maybe exciting and new?" You know, maybe we can help, you know, this other group and bring, take off some of theirs so they can maybe focus on more academic things, or they can focus on more student-focused things. But they're, right now, there's a lot of them thinking, "How are we going to do business differently?" But it's going to be all of us. So, and I'm envisioning, we're going to have to have small groups with all of those, all of those folks within those units saying, "Okay, how are we going to do it differently?"
Who has a box?
Where's the box?
Pam, I think you mentioned a feedback loop.
Yes.
Early on. It would be great if you could develop that along with the structure that you're developing so that we can quickly and effectively identify pinch points that come up, like the gentleman in the back mentioned, so we can address those as we go along. And I haven't, except for saying, there's going to be a feedback loop, I haven't really heard how, what, you know, something, detail about that.
And right now, we do have a website for some of the comments coming back, and I know we will keep that going, but if there's ways that you feel more comfortable providing additional feedback and you don't want to put it on the website, we'll have to figure out how to do that. But if you, oh, it's going to be constant, it has to be constant.
Yes. And I'm not sure that having a website where you can throw all the comments into it is the most effective way to have a good feedback loop.
But, you know, we will have to go through some sort of evaluation process, you know, I mean, if we get it at least somewhat designed and implemented, you know, by whatever date, and then we're going to have to keep evaluating it. You know, if there's, you know, pull, pull the red teams in and say, and I'm saying teams because they're people and not boxes, so they're teams, red teams in and say, "Okay, what's working for you, what's not working for you? Do you think your folks are, you know, your units are satisfied?" Then we're going to have to pull the units in and say, "Okay, what do you like, what do you don't like?" But we'll have to have some sort, and to me, a lot of that's going to be listening and discussion and saying, "You got to help me," you know? We want to make this the best possible that we can for the folks involved.
But also have a system so that the customers, the department heads, the faculty, the staff have a way of also inputting information.
Yes.
And feedback.
Totally agree. Totally agree. And if you have ideas, please send them my way.
Mark?
Okay. Yeah, I just had a question about, this might be looking ahead too far, but I, I'm going to ask it anyway, but.
Go for it.
Just because I'm thinking about, as you fill these red team positions, you might be able to make them more attractive in terms of how they're structured with like the benefits or the term of their appointment. And I didn't know if, you know, all of us have different end dates for our current appointments and our letter of intent, so I just didn't know. I've been on soft funding for a long time, you know, are those going to be all renegotiated as you move into red box positions? And if you stay in units, will those also be renegotiated if you change your job duties? Because it might, for example, if I know that the red box positions are sort of centrally funded and they're not going to go away, it, you know, I would, that would change how I view them as opposed to thinking about them as just, you know, one or two-year things, so.
I think our expectation, again, not yet discussed with the president, but likely that those would be continuous positions in the models. And so, but to Dr. Blodgett's comment, right, we need to ebb and flow. If you, you know, certainly if you come into the model and something's not working, that may shift. Who you support might shift, what that looks like might shift as Workday evolves, things come in. But I think our intention is that those positions themselves are continuous in nature. Not yet decided. Oh, sorry. Hi.
You've addressed that merit staff may be impacted and other people who are currently doing the duties may be impacted. So, the entry-level positions on the red teams, are you seeing these as PNS positions? Are they both PNS and merit opportunities, or talk a little bit about that?
We haven't really.
You don't know.
Got down that road, but we're working on doing merit and PNS positions within the finance red teams. Yes.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I guess I'm, I'm listening to this and been kind of staying close, but there's a lot of specific examples at like the local level that people have questions about maybe how, how they're going to be affected or how their local units can be affected. And we keep getting the answer of, that's where everybody's really got to be involved in discussion. And my question kind of is, you know, we have this model proposal up here, and my question is, have we gone through that level of discussion on at least just one, one, to all the way down to one local unit to understand where some of these questions are coming from and how we're going to handle it, without just saying, "Well, we just got to discuss it more."
And I could tell you from the finance side, we're looking at it from the Division of Finance and University Services right now. We're trying to put a, maybe a pilot in to look through it. I'm also talking with another, could be a unit or subunit, that they're looking at it, and we've been, so, trying to be test cases. So, we've got two right now that we're, we're looking at and working with to try and see what it entails. You know, because when, we're going to have to talk to all of the folks involved and all of their supervisors and administrators, we're going to have to kind of get that, get it right and figure out how to, what things we need to present. And so, we have been having some of those discussions and reworking of positions and what that means. So, but on a test cases, a test basis so that we can hopefully roll it out to a larger, a larger group.
So, wouldn't we want to do some of that to understand the rules that exist? Would we actually decide that to be part of the model? If we're designing a model, is that what's happening? Or we're going to, that's what kids learn? And if we have to determine that that's the model we're going to create, that's what we're going to answer from beginning?
So, let me see if I can unpack your question. So, certainly, to Pam's point and on the HR side as well, we're doing that kind of local test cases and what that looks like and trying to unpack that. And that's continuing to tell us, you know, the scope of the path ahead. And we'll likely frame up our recommendations on what's feasible and what the timetable looks like for us to achieve a desired state, whatever desired state that is. To say that that's happening broadly, I don't think we're there yet. But to your point, you know, Pam and I spent time together with other experts yesterday, really trying to unpack what a lot of those variables were based off of our experiences that we've had in some of those conversations. So, it does feel, it all feels iterative right now. It's kind of all happening at once. But I think your feedback through the website helps us, your comments today help us continuing to share that locally with your supervisors or your HR liaisons, your finance folks. I think that feedback is helpful for us to hear. Is there a box? Oh, sorry.
Yeah, I agree. Something needs to change with training, specifically with financial stuff. There's a lot of rules at the university that aren't always known by everybody who works in the field. But my question for you is, how, what kind of training do you envision? Do you, you say it will be easier to train financial groups this way, but it seems like there's still going to be a lot of people. So, how is that training going to be carried out? Are you going to go with the HR partner or the yellow team to train the red teams? Are the people on the red team, red teams going to get direct training? What's the timeline on that, and how do you envision that, I guess?
Okay, so, can I go back to my colors? So, I have a blue team, a red team, and a yellow team, okay? The blue team are the central, central offices. Those are the ones that actually set the policies and set the procedures and, you know, pull in the federal guidelines and things. And so, in my mind, it's those teams that set the policies, and so, the blue teams, central, they will be, I mean, currently, they do a lot of training, but when you have 1,200 and some people that access those systems, you know, and if you've had that training 10 years ago, you know, and maybe the same training, but we're going to go through a whole series of new training things with Workday, you know, but the Workday will be the system, but then we'll still have the policies and procedures that'll need to be put into those, into those training. And I think they're currently working on training things, but it's, it's really going to be a lot easier if we train 50 people than if we train 1,200 people. And so, we're going to hope, hopefully, train them to be the specialists, the experts in those areas, so they're the go-to people. They're the ones that'll know how to do the things and be highly trained, working with the system, working with the policies and procedures. So, the training hopefully will be more intense and on a more regular basis for those groups in the red teams. And working with the blue teams to make sure that they, we get reinforcements of what the, what the policies and procedures and the guidelines are, so.
I see that being delivered in a variety of ways, you know, whether that's online. I also see kind of communities amongst the professions happening, right? So, the finance folks can get together, they just experience a training and debrief. What resources are we missing to be able to address these questions? What open questions do we still have so we can iteratively evolve those things? And I think that's really important through this path of change is, to Pam's point, getting everybody with, with the right information, both technical, right, but also that functional side of what we need to do. I've lost track of the boxes.
Are the new roles that are being developed and will be advertised following the current PNS classification system, or are you integrating the new PNS class and comp?
Yeah, I think that's still a bit open for discussion. We're working through it and working through the hurdles or the pluses and minuses. I have a big pros-cons list in my office about what that looks like. Practically speaking, the university has a capacity for change, right? There's only so much we can take. Many of you think we've already stepped beyond that, okay? And there are moments that I feel that way as well. But I think it's a balance here of helping folks to really be able to translate in, from today's world, what that looks like. Tomorrow's world isn't fully defined from a class comp structure, okay? We're working on it. The work, the class comp team's working really hard on that. You all have very unique jobs, and we're trying to create, create the right job families and to help support the university's needs. So, we likely may talk about them in a new way and help start that translation, but I think from a practical perspective, that may be a bridge too far to fully jump. But that's still something we're, we're working through. Emma's here. Emma, did I mess up that answer? Okay, I got a thumbs up. Fox?
Hi.
Good, good catch.
Thank you. I'm thinking in January, February, we see what these new positions look like. Let's just assume I want to, I see myself in one of these positions. So, I explore the opportunities, and they say yes. So, then I take training. But I also have a job to do. So, what support do I have to learn a new job while I'm doing my current job and my coworkers are taking on new responsibilities that I now can't do?
That's a very valid point.
So, I, I mean, I'm already stressed, and now I'm doing two jobs? Or three or four?
We're working on that one, and that's, that's probably as far as I can go. That's very fair and one of my chief concerns as we look through this, what I'm calling the messy period from January to Go Live. We've got to figure that out. Four minutes left.
What about currently posted finance or HR jobs? Are they, there's like budget or fiscal officers, are they looking forward to this? Or if you apply for that job, do you even know what you're applying for?
I can give you one answer. We've got, I think, there's two jobs posted for, one for Academic Affairs and one that's shared between Academic Affairs and Finance and University Services. And those jobs that we did post are looking forward to the new model, but that's our test case. I mean, this is, we're trying to develop, we still need the work done, but we're trying to figure out, and we don't, we each have open positions, and so, we're trying to hire one person that may be able to move totally into this model with the understanding that when they interview, we're going to tell them, "Okay, our goal is to move whichever person we hire that's going to be helping Academic Affairs and business, or the finance and University Services, that their job will likely move to a red team." And so, that's, that's the understanding that we're working with right now, but right now, we need, we need support, we need help, so.
And there's a real balance. I recognize that some units are posting lots of jobs that might be inside the model. Okay, the president and I discussed this yesterday. We still have a further discussion to have. We've made the commitment that all of you have the opportunity to see yourself in this new model. We know we need to get you more information first, but we also need to make sure we're not making, making, you know, part of that hill a little bit, a little bit tougher as we work through this. It's a real balance. There's still work to get done. We know there's still a lot of work to get done, right? A lot of work to get done. And so, trying to figure out how we manage that in a temporary space is really important. Got a box?
I got a box. My question is that we all know that our jobs are changing. Do we need to be looking on the job board to see, to apply for these positions? Are we going to be approached by HR, by the financial teams to change our positions? What should we be doing to actively do something?
We're working on the process right now. We're, we're working with Margot and EO and trying to figure out, we need to define a process. And hopefully, it will be one that, because there's so many jobs that will have to change and be filled, that we won't go through your normal application process job. So, that, the game plan is to figure out that pathway to allow you either to express interest, yes, no, maybe so, that, okay, you know, if it's yes, then, you know, we'll try and engage you and get you more information and the information that you really want to evaluate. If it's no, okay, then you're going to have to work with your units and say, "What's, what's going to be here for me within the unit?" But then if it's a maybe so, it's, okay, what, what do we have to provide you? What, you know, what interaction do we have to have to help you make that decision? Or you look at them and say, "Let me look at it a bit more, but we'll try and give you as much information as possible." But we're, we are working through that to figure out how we're actually going to move because I think on the finance side, we'll have a lot more folks moving than on the HR side. And so, we're trying to streamline the process and make it as less cumbersome as possible, but still identify what those steps are.
And I would say you shouldn't be surprised when those jobs are available, okay? You're also, our hope is that we communicate to the place where you say, "Stop," okay? So that we're able to make sure you know you're ready, what those deadlines look like, all those types of things, and that you're able to get the right information. That's not a super-defined process right now about how we're going to get there because, again, I might know you have access to a system, I don't know how involved you are in HR or, or finance. And so, we've got to figure out a way to make that communication meaningful as we work through this.
So, we have reached 11 o'clock. We have one more question?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, just a quick question. First of all, Pam and Kristi, good, good job on the town hall meeting. But I was wondering, are there any plans for post-town hall meetings to see how things really went and what the impact would be after this thing all goes live?
From my perspective, this is a journey, okay? And, and we need to learn from each step in that journey, right? You gave feedback, we showed up here today, you're going to give us feedback again. That's going to help us to continue to shape this and can continue to shape our processes. You know, certainly. You know, certainly the feedback loop after the models, let's say, are live, what that looks like, that's still also important. But this is, this is truly a journey and one that we want to continue to meet the university's needs. I think that isn't always defined for us at this point. We want to be responsive.
And so, if there's a lot of additional questions after this that maybe weren't addressed in this session, but we may have another town hall meeting too because the questions that came up after Sarah and Beata went out across campus with their, with their presentations, that generated a lot of questions back. So, if there's more questions that we need to address,
We're happy to do it.
We'll be doing whatever needs that we can communicate with you and get your input.
And I do want to take a second to remind you of those mechanisms that are available for your feedback. One of them is through email to the Professional and Scientific Council. The other one is through the WorkSite website. The Professional and Scientific Council is accepting comments through the end of the day today. And the WorkSite website is accepting comments through the end of the day on October 26th, so tomorrow. You still have time to submit your questions and feedback on the proposed improved service delivery models for finance and human resources. And the slides from today will be posted on that improved service delivery website and will be provided in a forthcoming email. So, there will be an email that's being sent out from the Improved Service Delivery Campus Outreach Group. So, thank you all very much for coming today. You didn't know there was an email, did you? You didn't know there was an email, did you? I was like, hey.